I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. You have the motion to approve the agenda.
I so move.
I have a motion, second to approve the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the September 14th, 2022 district board meeting and revision of policy 200 Declaration of Financial Executancy. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I so move.
I have a motion.
I second that.
And I have a second. Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Public comment. Zach, I think you mentioned we don't have anyone. Is that still? Okay. Thank you, sir. We have no one to speak today. Next is presentations from guests and representatives to the board. First is excellent at Ames, Kelly Zielman. Do you have someone joining us today?
Good afternoon on this beautiful fall day in Colorado. I am so delighted that you are going to be able to meet our speaker today. She is a 2016 graduate of Ames. She is currently pursuing her master's in mental health counseling, clinical mental health at Adam State University. She is the mother of four. And when she is not working her full-time job, mothering her children or studying for her master's, she can be found on her best day rollerblading with some good disco tunes in her earphones. I think you are going to be really touched and inspired by her story. So would you please welcome Deanne Zolke?
Hello, can everyone hear me okay? Good. Thank you so much for letting me be here and inviting me, Kelly, to talk about Ames. Ames is a very special place that I hold dear to my heart. I'm standing here because of the experience I had attending Ames and getting my associate's degree. I got it back in 2016. Now, I am a mother of four and I was married for 17 years and had a hardship and went through divorce. So after that divorce, I became fully a caregiver and a financial provider for my family. I had no college experience. College was something that was always in the back of my head and I thought, oh, that would be great if I could do something like that. But at the time, my husband's career always kind of took precedence over that. So once I went through my divorce, I got a job and it was kind of entry level where I made $10.50 an hour. And I thought, okay, this isn't going to support my family. What am I going to do? I could do two jobs, but then I wouldn't be home with my kids. What was I going to do? I saw opportunities for growth in the jobs that I worked for, but I was missing one important thing, which was a degree. So after tears and me saying, what am I going to do? I said, I want to go back to school. But I was terrified. I had no idea how I would even go about it. I've never been to college. I graduated high school, but it had been 20-plus years. I was in my mid-30s and I used to go back to school. Ames was here in my community. I'm a Colorado native, a Greeley native. Go Greeley. I thought, where do I start? I called. They got me set up with an advisor. My advisor at Ames was amazing. Her name was Trish and she's no longer there, but she looked me in the eye. She sat me down and she said, you can absolutely do this. I had tears in my eyes because I was scared. I really didn't think that I would be able to get a degree or that I was smart enough. But she said, you absolutely can and you're going to do amazing. And that is what I needed. I had the confidence. So then she got me connected to a financial advisor and I was able to get set up with FASFA and get my school loans. And I started my first day at Ames. Ames gave me an opportunity to empower myself. It gave me self-confidence. And there were so many possibilities for me to succeed, starting with the learning center. They had tutors there if I needed to. Again, it had been 20-plus years since I went to high school. So that was kind of scary. And the education that I received was amazing. It was actually one of my classes that I found my current career. It was a death and dying class. And I thought, oh, gosh, is this the only psychology class that will transfer to UNC that I haven't taken? Are you kidding me? One of the students said, no, you'll love it. I thought, no, it sounds depressing. It sounds horrible. But I took it because I knew it would transfer. I ended up falling in love with that class. And halfway through, not only did I say, oh, wow, I'm really interested in this topic. I also figured that this is my niche. This is what I want to do. And so it gave me that path to psychology and careers that I wanted to focus on. And I am now the executive director at the Community Grief Center. So it was that class at Ames that kind of connected me to where I am today. Now, I graduated and then got my associates and then I transferred to UNC. Ames spoils their students. It was a little bit different of an experience going to UNC. But I have to say that without that experience and love and support and encouragement that I received from Ames, I can 100% say that if I would have started at UNC, there was no way I would have succeeded. It was a bigger school. They didn't support their students as well as Ames did. And it felt like such a loving, caring community. So I owe so much to Ames because of it. And looking back, the students, the teachers, even history, and I hated history in high school. I saved it for my last class in my semester. But the history teachers were amazing. And I would have people say, well, I really hope that you get what you're going for and you can use your degree. Because I know plenty of people who have gotten a degree and they're doing something completely different. And I looked at them and I thought, well, that's not an option for me. I know what I want and I'm going to go for it. And I did, and here I am. So again, I just, I can't thank Ames enough and I can't encourage enough people that are looking to go into college how important going for your first two years at Ames and then transferring into a different university can be so beneficial. Not only is it cheaper, which is always a good thing, but the quality you receive is outstanding. So thank you so much for letting me share very quickly my story and my passion for Ames. And thank you Ames for everything that you allowed me to become and have that experience.
Thank you so much for sharing your story with us. You and people like you are why we're here.
Yes.
And your encouragement to keep going and to help more students or people like you. So thank you for sharing your success and encouraging others to get the same. Small token of our appreciation.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Very nice to watch.
So just as a reminder for folks, Deanne also led our ceremony during COVID when we planted a tree on the Greeley campus and had the, basically the grief ceremony on campus. So Deanne was the leader of that. So thank you, Deanne.
Thank you for sharing that, Dr. Bee. Next on the agenda, representatives to the board. First up is our SGA Association Representative Danielle Irwin. Before we hear from Danielle, I would like to bring your attention to the fact that Danielle applied for, I believe, a scholarship to attend the College Recovery Leadership Academy, '22 to '23. And I'd just like to read a little excerpt from a letter. "This program, the College Recovery Leadership Academy, receives thousands of applicants. And Danielle is among the 50 applicants, we're happy to say, was selected to participate. She will receive funding for a project to implement at Ames, an all-expense-paid trip to Washington, D.C." You look excited. "...an all-expense-paid trip to Washington, D.C. to attend the Leadership Summit and meet with policymakers, among many other things." Congratulations, Danielle.
Thank you all very much. And greetings. It's a pleasure to be here. Members of the board, cabinet members, Chair Oxiger, Dr. Borstein, and everybody else in attendance. Thank you all for having me. So I know I've said this before and I'm going to say it again, but holy cow, I cannot believe how fast the semester is flying by. I cannot believe it is already midterm week. So that's just, it's crazy. Good though. Our student leaders continue to work diligently and to advocate and program for the student body. We have a very busy month ahead. We have some great events planned for the month of October. SGA will be hosting Spirit Week from October 24th through the 28th. We encourage students, faculty, and staff to participate and enjoy the different events, activities, giveaways, foods, dress-up days, and so much more. Each day is going to feature a different theme and there will be opportunities to participate in an exclusive drawing for exclusive Ames merch. So we encourage everybody to participate and please check the Student Activities Calendar for a complete list of the dress-up days. Spirit Week is intended to create a sense of school spirit and cultivate a community of care. And it's a great way for students to celebrate that school spirit and to bring that enthusiasm across all of the different campuses. Our hope with these activities is to create a sense of belonging and unity amongst our students. So we encourage all of you to participate. And if you'd like, please email a selfie to studentactivities@ames.edu to win a prize. Additionally, in partnership with Markham, CAF will be hosting our trick-or-treat event featuring the movie Monster House on October 31st from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. This community event will be sure to offer everyone all of the candy and fun that they need this spooky season. So make sure to stop by the Welcome Center Ballroom for candy, pizza, costume contests, and photo booths. And we would also appreciate and love if any of you would like to volunteer or to sign up for this event. We highly encourage the different departments to host a table to hand out candy. And there's also an opportunity for all of the different departments to decorate their table. And the winning decorated table will, can receive a pizza party for their department. So we're pretty excited about that. And if you would like more information on this opportunity, please contact studentactivities@ames.edu. Furthermore, the Recovery Steering Committee that I am on has been working diligently to perfect our recovery allyship trainings that we're beginning to implement. We've had our first few training sessions and they've been a huge success. The feedback that we have received from all of our participants has been invaluable at shaping our presentation. So it's been wonderful. And then I also wanted to take a minute to share. Thank you. You all heard the announcement. I was accepted into the Collegiate Recovery Leadership Academy. And this is an academic year-long fellowship program for students who are passionate about the intersection of advocacy and recovery and leadership. So as was mentioned, I was one of only 50 applicants and that was selected in this very competitive application process. And if I may, I just wanted to read just a tiny portion of my application. It's kind of bragging up Ames a little bit. So when I first began my journey into higher education, I was heavy into addiction. I attended my first semester, but I failed to return to take any of my finals. I failed classes. I felt hopeless and I was unable to continue. I left school and I fell hard into that lifestyle. But after 11 years of active addiction, I eventually decided that I needed to continue my education. Now, from that point, higher education has been my saving grace. Through the community at Ames, I have grown and I have developed as an individual. I have learned leadership skills and the necessary attributes to better advocate on behalf of the students of my community. Higher education has been my shining star in the night sky and I do not know what my life would be like without all of the support that I have received from Ames. Ames has welcomed me with open arms despite my past and allowed me to flourish in an environment where I feel I didn't belong. I am a better person because of the community I have found and higher education has instilled in me a confidence that I can use to help better the future of others who have felt as hopeless as I have. I hope to continue the work that I have been so inspired by. Now, due to this acceptance, as was mentioned, I will receive some funding to help implement a collegiate recovery-focused project. So I'm very excited about that. Advocacy training and I will also receive support from a cohort of peers from around the country. So that's super exciting. And as mentioned, I also get to attend a trip to Washington, D.C., which is very exciting. I've never been before. And I do believe that my participation in this fellowship program will benefit the students served by Ames. But on that wonderful note, thank you all so much for your time. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, thank you, Danielle. And again, congratulations and thank you for the report. And thank you for your sharing, your enthusiasm. Appreciate it. Next is Ames Faculty Association Representative Momita Roy. Welcome. Keep that smile.
I go.
Okay.
Okay, so is it, can you hear me?
Of course.
So a big hello and a very good afternoon to Chair Oxiger, members of the board, Dr. Bee, Dr. Rotimer, cabinet members, my colleagues, students, and friends. Before I begin though, I have to thank Deanne and Danielle for being such continued inspiration for us all. They remind us why we are here and what can we do to encourage such amazing students. Thank you. And I wish you continued success in the future. On that note, let me tell you, the faculty are not behind. And I'm so proud and honored to share with you the stories of their dedication, sacrifice, and their courage for our students. Let's start by recognizing the faculty team who worked on the latest edition of the Signature Magazine under the leadership of Dr. Carol Brown. It's called Aimful. And the theme this week was creating and engaging an equitable learning community. Is this better? Okay. Oh, that's amazing. I would love to hear what you think of it at some time. Please see the names of the dedicated faculty members on your board packet. And their wisdom, their experience is going to shape how we teach and learn here at Ames in a very positive and meaningful way. The FTLC would also like to recognize Lindin, Alicia Trillo, Darlene Haft, and Tammy Schneider for engaging in professional development using the new One Higher Aid platform. It's called One HE. One HE is an on-demand learning platform which has a lot of micro courses related to pedagogy. And I cannot wait to start my journey with it and earn the badges and then come back and brag about it. Speaking of performance and presentations, our music faculty led by Dr. Richard Bouson recently organized a recital which was performed by Ames students during summer. And Brew Kelsey, another amazing music faculty, she participated in the International Keyboard and Odysseum Festival at the Colorado State University. What a great representation for Ames. May I request you at this moment to look at your board packet, look at the picture. That is a picture from an exhibit by our own Karis Flechner from the ECA. And her soft sculptured display won a lot of hearts. I can tell you the name of the display or you can guess. It's a pool party. Thank you so much, Karis, for spreading so much joy. Continuing with professional development and training, Carrie Noble, who is a professor of nurse aid and medical prep, she participated in the responding to emergencies training where she played the role of a victim. She's going to utilize that training to help our med prep students prepare for handling medical emergencies. Thank you, Carrie, for your continued dedication for Ames and our students. The next story of dedication is one of my favorites and I'll tell you why. Megan Friesen, professor of English, continues to lead the effort to bring the Dolly Parton Imagination Library to Will County. This program mails a free, age-appropriate book to a child registered. And this is aiming to close the literacy gap. I will let Megan's own word describe this process. She said, "As a proud member of Ames Community College, I believe in serving our community and this program truly does that." Megan, thank you for being such an inspiration. Now, we move to recognition and awards. For our exceptional faculty, their work and dedication not only uplift all of us here at Ames, but their commitment ripples across borders, nationally and internationally. May I request you to hold your applause? And after I complete mentioning their names, then we are going to burst out in a roaring applause to celebrate them. Does that sound good? Okay. So let's start with Dr. Fanamulumore, instructor of physics and astronomy. She earned the title of NASA Space Physics Ambassador. She was only one of the eight instructors nationwide to be chosen to be a part of this program. That's amazing. And you can read in the board packet about her plans to share her love for astronomy and physics, not just within students, but nationally and internationally, and dare I say, space. And the next up is Jeffrey Moser. He's a writer's community coach and he won the third place honors in the 2021 National Poetry Competition. That's amazing again. But I think I have left the best one for last. Beth Meglin. She is an instructor at Emergency Medical Services. She received the Department of Health and Human Services National Medical Disaster System Civilian Medal. That was for her work during the COVID pandemic at a time when very little was known about the disease, no vaccines, no treatment. And she also worked as an ICU nurse at the North Colorado Medical Center during that pandemic. I have to echo the words of Dr. Susan Morland, who is our Academic Dean of Public Safety and Transportation, as she writes, "Beth risked her life to help others. It is a great honor to have her on our team." Can we now have that huge applause that we were holding on to? If you see any of those award recipients on campus, please let them know how proud and lucky we are to have them. That brings me to the end of this month's report, but I'm excited to come back and share more inspiring stories next time. Meanwhile, are there any questions that I can answer?
Your enthusiasm is just over the top. We appreciate it because you're so Ames. You're all in with your gift of enthusiasm that spreads through this room. I think everybody's got a smile on their face. I wish I could turn around and see everybody smile all the time like that.
Oh, my goodness, that was my goal. That is one of my goals. So I'm so happy that, you know, I brought a smile on your faces because we all need that. And I am here for Ames because Ames has given me a lot too. So I'm just reciprocating the kindness that has been shown to me by my chair, my dean, Dr. Rotimer, Dr. Bee. It's just a pleasure to be here. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Momita, for your report. And I know we all echo Trustee Houss' comments about your enthusiasm. So thank you so much. Next, Ames Staff Association, Mr. Ross Perkins. Follow that one, sir.
He chose not to. Good afternoon, brother trustees, Dr. Bee, everyone in the audience. It's great to be here today. It's been about two and a half years, probably three years, since I've been on the Windsor campus and I can't wait to take a walk around this afternoon. We've got some great things for the Ames Staff Association that's happening and I want to share that with you. First, starting on November 2nd, we're going to do an Ames staff appreciation recognition. We're going to be giving out some mom's popcorn to all 429 staff members. And so we're super excited about that. You'll see that in the Ames Daily, probably in the next day or so. We're making sure we get all the numbers correct so we can buy, we'll have a few extra popcorns probably for a few folks. The other thing that we're doing is on November 18th, we have scheduled some volunteer time at the Will County Food Bank for our staff, anybody who wants to join us to come and to do some packing of food and stuff like that at the Will County Food Bank. That's going to be from 1:00 to 4:00. And Nan Pressley is here, is in charge of that. So you can reach out to her if you have any questions or anything like that. You'll see some Ames Daily, once again, about signing up and getting involved in that. One of the new things that Ames Staff Association has started is we are emailing out a welcome letter to all new Ames staff and also Ames staff that are in new positions that have probably been here and got a new position or promoted or however. And so we're just welcoming them to Ames, giving them information about the Ames Staff Association and just introducing them to the Ames Staff Association Leadership Team. So if they have any questions, so that we can just be advocates for them and just be a point of contact for them and stuff. So I know in your board packet, you have your, the ripples that get sent out every month. But I'm going to actually kind of thank Deanne and Danielle and Momita because I want to read one of the, one of the things that was submitted in the ripples because I think it's really important. It shows how we come together as a team to create successes for our students, for our staff, for our faculty, for our alumni and things like that. So I'm going to read a shortened version of it, but I want to just read this out loud real quick. It was titled, "Early College Academy." "I would like to thank the whole staff at the Early College Academy and Ames Community College in Greeley, Colorado. My two daughters, Eva and Deborah, both attended their four-year high school there, the Early College Academy. Eva graduated in May of 2021. She is already in her second year of college, working on her pre-med career. My other daughter, Deborah, just started her first year, working also on her pre-med career. I give Early College Academy the credit for the wonderful work they did and for, for both of my daughters as professors and mentors." And this comes from Eva and Deborah's mom. She submitted that ripple. So I wanted to take that opportunity to recognize that. Can we give them a round here? I think that just highlights the incredible work that we're doing here, that we heard from Deanne earlier. But also just seeing the impact that it has on the parents of the students that are attending and stuff and recognizing the great work that we're doing. Thank you very much. Are there any questions, thoughts or comments? Okay. You're welcome.
Thanks for taking care of everybody here. I mean, you do a lot. I'm sure everybody would agree he does a lot. Does he do it enough? A little bit?
There you go.
Yeah, got one hand up. Maybe another one? Got two? Got three? Little bit? No. That's what you're doing.
No, thank you very much. I enjoy it. Have a great day.
Thank you very much, Ross. Next on the agenda is the action items. The one action item we have is naming of the Windsor Campus Academic Building. Mr. Chuck Jensen, vice president of Administrative Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have before you Action Item 7A. This is the naming of the Windsor Academic Building. As we begin the planning process many years ago on this building, we simply called it the Windsor Academic Building, a very creative name that we had picked out. Again, that was just a placeholder. Now we're now at that point where signage needs to be ordered and such. And so through the work of the Executive Steering Committee, we are bringing forth the name Gateway Building to the, to the board for your consideration. Again, those of us that toured the building this morning really recognize the fact that that is the first building that will be on campus as they come on South Gate, and it will be the gateway to Windsor Campus. So the academic or the administrative recommendation is a motion to approve the name Gateway Building for the Windsor Academic Building. I stand for any questions?
Any questions? Okay, well, I don't see any questions. So with that, I would ask for a motion to approve Action Item 7A. I make a motion to approve it. As certain Action Item 7A. I take it that motion. Okay, we'll, a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Great job, Chuck. Yeah, that was a fun one. Next is information items. Item A, events, calendar and upcoming work session agenda items. I'll turn that over to Jerry.
Thank you, Chair Oxiger. If you'll find in your packet, the upcoming events calendar. The, I guess the one coming up most recently is going to be the A C C T Leadership Congress, October 26th through 29th. Before you leave today, don't rush off because I have a quick question for everybody before you leave, so stick around for that. You'll see Foundation Board Social, November 2nd, 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And the Foundation Board Meeting down in Fort Lepton on November the 10th, 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. If you have an, if you intend on going and you have an R S V P for those, please email me so I can be on the list for those. Two others that I want to draw your attention to, December 9th, is commencement. I know at our previous meeting, we'd asked for you guys to put that on the calendar. So we ask you to please confirm that you have that date scheduled for the whole time, that whole day, schedule it off. And as we get more information, I'll reach out to you with the specific times. And the last item is February 17th, Dr. B. mentioned this earlier, but Conversation Day. Please schedule off February 17th as well. You'll see Board Retreat written on there, but that's coming up in Item C, so we'll talk about that a little bit more as we get there. Next, just wanted to go over the November schedule for agenda items. There'll be Budget Assumptions Work Session from Chuck. And then there'll be the H R, Safety and Clear Report and the President's Report. That'll be a presentation given during the meeting. And there will be a debrief from the A C C T North Conference.
Okay, any questions of Jerry on the calendar? And comments? Everybody's checking to make sure we have them on our calendars. Okay, good job. Dr. Bornstein.
We are quickly trying to confirm if we have a morning or an evening commencement ceremony to let you know which part of the day to reserve. So as soon as... Texting highlights here, I'll let you know. 5:00 p.m. will be our commencement on December 9th. And typically, we want folks on that form to be there an hour and a half-ish earlier, so 3:30.
Okay. There you have it. All right, any other comments? Okay, thank you, Jerry, very much. Next is correspondence.
Chair Oxiger, I'm sorry, the trustee house has a question.
One, December, we don't have a work session on December. We don't have a work session in December.
Yep, yep, there will be a meeting. Let me just go.
On the, on the 14th?
Correct.
I'm just, you know, my calendar, so my brain.
Yeah, December 14th is, is, yeah, so November the, November the 9th and December the 14th are the, the meeting dates for the rest.
Right. Do we have work session?
Yes.
Okay, so 11.
It depends. It could be 11, it could be later.
Let me set that.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, next item, again, correspondence. And I do have a letter here. I'll just read it here. "Greetings, Dr. Bornstein and our Ames Community College partners. A sincere thanks for allowing us the privilege of hosting our Tuscaloosa Habitat delegation at your fantastic Ames Welcome Center. To say our visitors were impressed with your beautiful campus would be an understatement. Your hospitality and internal support for our Tuscaloosa Roundtable Discussion were fantastic. Thank you. We deeply appreciate your partnership and support in sharing our common goal to provide learning opportunities focused on community models and pathways to a better life for all now and in the future. Thank you once again for giving your time and resources to ensure our guests truly experience the best of Greeley. With gratitude, Sheri." That's from Sheri Witt Brown, Executive Director, the Greeley Weld Habitat for Humanity. What an awesome letter to get. So how about a round of applause for her? Next, the Board of Trustees meeting retreat dates for 2023. Jerry.
Thank you, Chair Oxiger. You'll find in your packet a draft of the upcoming, the upcoming board meeting and retreat dates for 2023. I did reach out to Marilyn to get her preferences on dates prior to her, her leaving, knowing that she would be absent for today's meeting. So those are reflected here already. But I wanted to take a minute for you guys to go through that and to let me know if you saw any conflicts with the dates that are listed there. You'll see the Board Retreat is listed as January 19th. And that'll be an all-day. And then the June Retreat will be June 6th and 7th. And then the rest of the dates are listed there as well for the upcoming board meetings. So please take a look at that. The intent is that this will come back in November for approval for the board. So if you see any dates on there that are a conflict right now, let me know so I can make note of that. Or you can reference your calendars and email me after the, too.
So please pay special attention to do that and to review those dates. So Jerry can bring that to our next meeting for approval. Thank you. Okay, next is the progress of board priorities. You should have a copy of our board priorities in your packet. The objective here is just to have a quick discussion on, almost, we want to see if anybody has any comments on our progress towards our board priorities. And I'll just read them, so if, don't have them up on your screen. A, continue the professional growth of the trustees of Ames Community College. That includes identifying specific work session topics that inform the board and provide opportunities for in-depth discussions. Assess board performance monthly during our meetings and participate in local and national professional development. B, focus on developing a cohesive, high-functioning governing board that models respect, trust, and positive work and relationships. To include adopting and implementing a code of conduct policy and procedures. Each trustee will review board policies and procedures, 1 to 99. Any suggested changes should be brought to the September 2022 Board Meeting. And that's today. Strengthen connections and advocate for the college within the communities Ames serves. So our intent, of course, is to review these periodically and then respond if there's any questions, any comments. So I guess I would ask you today, are there any comments?
I think we should strike. I don't know if it's the, any suggested changes should be brought to the September 2022 Board Meeting. Does that really need to be in there?
Well, I think we have accomplished that. So the objective today is to see how we're progressing on this. So, yeah, so I think any changes that anybody has brought. Did you have something to say?
I always have something to say.
That's true.
So yes, it came from our June Retreat. We had identified everybody individually reviewing and bringing to September. However, if there's ever any edits or anything, bring it at any time. If you just preferably let, let me or Jerry know ahead of time so that we can, you know, pull it out and have it presented and included. So it's not like that's the only time, but it was from our.
Yeah, good point. Yeah. So it's there, and hopefully you had any, you presented any. If not, if you come up with them, please do. So that can continue. Oh, I think we're, I think we're making good progress. I think we're continuing our professional growth. We're all signed up to go to the A C C T Conference in this month. That's, that's huge. I know that we all talk about work session topics. And we want to keep doing that. We have the opportunity to assess board performance during the monthly meetings. We always stop. We take a minute. We ask for comments. I think we're, we're making good progress and we're following our board priorities as we talked about in our retreat. So any other, little comments? Any other comments? Other than the striking? Okay, Mark? During our retreat, we did discuss starting to.
I can't hear you, Mark.
That talk into your microphone. During our board retreat, we did talk about having our meetings starting to turn the tables and facing those people in the back.
So I, I'll have, I have a couple of comments on that. This, this is just unique to this specific building because of this nice pillar here in the room setup. So for the August meeting and the September meeting, we were set up that way, and we will continue to do that. But for this specific space, it's just, we tried a couple different options yesterday before we settled on this one to try to fit everything. But not going into next year, we'll try again to try to find a way to make it work better.
And can we have more comfortable chairs? Where's Mary? Okay. There's no other comments. We'll move on. Next is the President's Report. Dr. Bornstein.
Thank you. So the highlighted, monthly highlights from each division is in your packet. So if there are any questions, that would be the time. Otherwise, we're going to focus on specific annual monitoring reports that the board has asked for on an annual or biannual basis. Are there any questions about highlights? Doctor Bornstein. Oh, I did, yes. Thank you. Okay, okay, hearing none. Then we will start with our academic plan, which is Dr. Russell, Executive Vice President, Chief Academic Officer. He will then roll into our academic program feasibility, review and viability. That's our, basically our program development and sunsetting of any programs. And then again, he will roll into our institutional research and core measure report. So today is Dr. Rothmer show with his team.
With the team, yes. Thank you, Dr. Bornstein, Chair Oxiger, members of the board. Thank you very much for your time on this fine October day in Windsor. The academic plan updates, and if you could, Mike or Derek, do the slide for me, please, and thank you. As you know, as we've talked about this each October, the academic plan is made up of two different components. Component A is the academic process improvement. Apparently, I do have a clicker myself, so thank you. And the component B is current initiatives. And under each of those components, there's different either processes. So component A has three processes, one through three. And then component B and current initiatives, they were, there were seven initiatives that we said, starting in 2020, we would be working on through 2023. So that's the academic plan from 2020 to 23. And we did that intentionally, as it will coincide with the development, as you heard during the work session of the new strategic plan as well. What I wanted to highlight for you today, and Dr. Bornstein already kind of set up the different pieces that we'll talk about in terms of program review, viability, also feasibility. And Dr. DeCosmo will be sharing that in a moment. And then as we look at our core measures, our Executive Director of Institutional Research and Assessment, Jeff Adcock, will be sharing that. But before I introduce those amazing team members, wanted to just highlight this past year, and as you mentioned, that the college has done a lot over in the last year. And I'm not going to go over each and every one of these, but wanted to give you a couple of specific highlights. And then, most importantly, as we are here today in Windsor, wanted to focus on what we've shared with you and you all approved us to work on a few months ago is the Bachelor of Applied Science in Public Safety. I was very hopeful today to be able to come to you and say.
I was very hopeful today to be able to come to you and say, guess what? HLC met on October 4th and 5th in their Institutional Actions Committee where they voted to approve our Bachelor of Science, or Bachelor of Applied Science. We found out yesterday that for whatever reason in HLC processes, not anything that the Ames team had done, because we met every deadline that we needed to meet. But our BAS actually didn't make their October meeting and will be on their November meeting agenda. So in December, when we're meeting in Greeley, I hope to come and share some very phenomenal news with you. But wanted to, as we were here, give you that update on the BAS. And then specifically thank everyone who has worked so hard on that initiative and that first bachelor degree for Ames. And we're very excited about being able to get that implemented as soon as possible, because we're just waiting for the, the green light. And we'll be ready to go. We have everything lined up in terms of courses, marketing, students, all of those different aspects. But we can't talk about that yet. And then I may have said too much, but I think we're safe. The other thing I wanted to share with you, because there was some interest and excitement from the board when this was introduced by our department chair and dean. And that is the digital marketing certificate that you all earlier this year approved us moving forward. And as you may remember, we've implemented that this fall. And wanted to just highlight for you very quickly that in the first two courses that are part of that certificate program, we have 10 students in the e-commerce course and eight students in the social media for business course. So a good start and we're looking forward to those programs growing. Now, that certificate also has other courses part of it. But a lot of other students that may not have declared that certificate are also in those. So we have much higher enrollment in something like the principles of marketing class and some of the other aspects as well. So those are kind of the highlights for the new degrees and certificates. Also, as you know, as we respond to what is happening in the state, our advisory committee, we evaluate our curriculum. That's what Dr. DeCosmo will share a little bit more in depth on as well. But we did, because oftentimes we, we get some feedback that we do a lot of new stuff, but we don't look at what we're currently doing, if it's still applicable. Well, as you know, we archive the certificates that are listed in your board pack, packet. And that was primarily because of a different direction of the state and being more responsive to workforce in this particular area to get the students the skills that they need in a timely manner so that they can get in to the work faster. So that's kind of the very high level of the different pieces that we've done. And with that, I now want to, before we get to questions, turn it over to Dr. DeCosmo and she'll kind of go in depth for you all with the program feasibility, review and viability again, which is part of the overall academic plan.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with updates on academic affairs, program feasibility and program review and viability work. As Dr. Rothmer presented some of our new degrees and certificates, those start with feasibility studies. And ideas for new programs come to us both internally and externally. And when they do, we think, we discuss, we research, all with a mindset of wanting to do what's best for students and for our community. And what we do is we look at job openings that if so, if a student started in a, in a new program and earned a degree or certificate, what kind of positions are available in our area? What are the starting salaries? What does salary growth look like? What degree levels are required to enter into the field? Does that position or does that job ladder into other careers? Are there other programs in the area that offer the same kinds of certificates and degrees we might be looking at? Are there any unique space needs that we need to consider? Equipment needs? Are there any clinicals or internships that might be required? Certification exams, programmatic accreditation, staff availability. So there are so many components that are wrapped into thinking about new programs and new certificates. Landon Lloyd, our CTE coordinator, is able to run a lot of data for us. And he is able to share a lot of this kind of information with the dean of the division where that new program would exist if we were to go ahead with it. The dean then considers, also collaborates, might talk with some advisory committee members in a related degree or certificate, and then talks with faculty. And then really a decision is made whether or not we want to continue researching and continue moving forward with a, a new program or certificate. Or if we might decide that it's just, it's not the right time for us right now for, for, for that particular one. So in your packet and on the screen is a list of all the program feasibility studies that have been completed since April 2022. Three of those are still in research phase. Three were investigated extensively and it was decided that this just is not the right time for Ames to pursue. One in particular I'd like to highlight is the one at the bottom of the list. It's sterile processing. We have a sterile processing certificate. And that is not going anywhere. It's a very, very popular certificate. It's a, it's a job that is very much needed in our community. But it was brought to our attention that maybe we should think about and, and a degree, an associate of applied science degree in sterile processing. And so that's why that is on the list. The degree was explored and it was determined it is not needed for students to enter into the field or to progress through the field. So we don't want to cause our students to take extra credits, extra time, extra tuition if they don't need to. So it was determined that we would not go ahead and pursue that particular degree. But just wanted to call that one to your attention so that you didn't look at it and say, hang on, I thought we had that one already. Because we do, it's just in certificate form. And moving to program review and viability, we are in the midst of our annual program review cycle right now. The process of program review includes collecting a lot of data. We, we use it to identify what our strengths are, what are our weaknesses in our programs, what goals do we want to set for our programs? Should we think about expansion? Should we think about contraction? Should we think about sunsetting? Should we think about combining with another degree program and so on? And the purpose of program review is really as part of that process of continual improvement. We want to do what's best for our students. We want to do what's best for our graduates. We want to do what's best for our community. And that annual program review is an opportunity to really dig deep into our programs to see what's working well, what could we be doing better, what might we be doing differently? The program review process is a very collaborative process. It starts with institutional research and assessment. So Jeff Adcock's team, you're going to hear from him in a minute. They create what are called program review data dashboards. And I included a couple of examples of data dashboards in your packet so that you can see what those look like. Each chair or program director receives their program's data dashboard and they get to work, collaborating with their teams, looking for trends, looking for opportunities for improvement, thinking about what's going well, thinking about what could be done differently, and really focusing on improvement and setting goals for the program for the upcoming year. The chairs and directors then submit their narrative to the dean. The dean then reviews, asks questions, enters into that conversation and that collaboration, and eventually approves the program review narrative that was submitted. And then my role in that process is support and supplying chocolate when needed, answering questions and making sure the process is moving along smoothly. Really what's included in program review, the data dashboards really do include that comprehensive view of what's included, but just kind of highlighting some of the, of the major points, looking at number of students, looking at number of credits that students are taking, demographic breakdowns, course-taking behavior, success rates, retention rates, completion rates, graduation rates. It's, it's a lot of rich data. And then those are the examples. I know they're too small to see on the screen. I know you have those in your packet. And as I mentioned, we are in the midst of this annual program review cycle. The chairs and the directors submitted their narratives to the deans on September the 23rd. And the deans are currently reviewing, asking for feedback, entering into those conversations. And their approvals will be complete by this Friday, by October the 14th. But some of them have already come in. And so I thought you might find it interesting to see some of the goals that are being set as a result of this year's program review. And I included a couple of quotes. One was from the sterile processing program. And they have decided to make as their goal, continuing to grow the program by increasing class sizes. This will help our community. Sterile processing technicians are in high demand currently and help us to continue to keep the number of students on the waitlist to a minimum. And then the welding department has as their goal, addressing ESL students and different learning styles. On average, 33% of our students are Hispanic and many of those are ESL students. We have no Spanish-speaking staff and have no curriculum offered in Spanish currently. So they've identified a direction that they might want to go in. And just as a couple of examples, there's just some really rich conversation and some amazing goals that are set as a result of this process. In terms of next steps and plans, the data dashboards include a lot of great information. But I think what we can think about doing is what more do we want to know when we're doing our program reviews? And so just kind of brainstorming a list of some possible topics that we might want to add. And these will be discussed and decided on with the deans and the chairs and the program directors later this month. But just brainstorming some other useful information we might want to consider is what is our, what are our programs costing per student? And, and they're going to be different. We're going to have programs that are a little more expensive and programs that aren't. And it's not about pointing fingers and saying, you know, you're expensive and aviation, we're looking at you. It's not going to be about that. It's really just going to be about, I think we need to know what our programs are costing our students or what our programs are costing us per student. Are our programs at capacity? And if they're not, what is our capacity and how close are we to reaching capacity? What is our faculty to student ratio? What about full-time faculty to part-time faculty ratios? What is our fill rate by modality? One of the things that COVID helped us to realize was that we can offer our classes in different ways. We can offer online. We can offer classes remotely through Zoom. We can still offer classes in person. We, when we have a course that has different sections with different modalities, we can look at how quickly are each of those sections filling? And that might give us some hints on what our students are looking for in terms of their modality. Because I think we're all kind of grappling with, what do we do now post-COVID? Do we continue to offer classes over Zoom? Do we continue to offer classes online? What are, what do students want? And looking at our fill rate by modality can help us to, to answer some of those questions. Another thing we plan to do is really take program review to the next step and start looking at it more holistically. I think there's some incredible work happening right now. Chairs, directors, faculty teams are digging in and they're entering into these conversations with their deans. But let's broaden that a little bit and, and open up some conversations so that deans are talking to deans and chairs are talking to chairs and we're sharing ideas about our programs. And we're looking at them in a holistic way. And Dr. Rothmer and I are just tossing around some ideas, maybe planning a retreat or something like that, so that the chairs, the deans, the directors, we can all dig in and learn from each other what's going well and what we want to work on with our programs. So should we pause for questions or should we wait for Jeff? Questions? Do you have any questions?
Mine's not a question, number one. Every time I had a question, you seemed to answer it the next sentence. So I appreciate you being so thorough with what you've done. And it sounds like your engagement of everyone trying to talk to each other, it kind of mimics the aviation ecosystems that you're trying to make sure everything is working together and there's no, and there's cross information going on. So I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Not a question, just a comment. I really appreciated seeing the process and how things are gone through and before they're approved. It was great information.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
I reiterate that on your data, and you know, we haven't seen, obviously with, with COVID, the last few years, just been kind of a let's not look at the numbers yet. But we know that we increased our enrollment. We, we did tick up a little bit, which is great. Do we have any information? Do we supply our students with information on career opportunities and income information potentials, whether it's a low, high, low, medium, high earning capacity for each field that we offer a certificate or a degree program in? Do we? Do we have that data, I guess?
I, I know we have the data. And I, I might look to Aaron to see at what point during the, the advising process are students informed about some of that information?
Yeah, so we don't, we don't collect that data, but we do help make that available to students when they're going through that decision-making process. And so our advisors help have those conversations with students. There's different websites that that information is actually publicly available to people. Onnet is a good example. So our advisors help students become aware of that information when they're selecting programs.
But we don't provide it for them? I'm telling them, go here and look at it? Is that what we do?
When I say we don't gather, like, we're not collecting that information for each of our programs. We're not collecting that information. We're helping them become aware of where that information is available to them.
Thank you. A lot of our departments actually have that information on hand and share that with their students as they go through the process and and we'll certainly look at how we have that on our website, because I think in a lot of instances, that information is available to help students make decisions about career paths, especially in the career and technical field. All right, are we ready to move on to core measures?
Just confirming with Zach, all that wonderful new on our website, on our program pages, I think that was also one of the data areas, isn't it, is what's the average or the range of salary for that program in our area? So even not a current student, a prospective learner can just go on our website on that program page and have that information as well. So there's kind of many ways they can.
All right. The next, though, I see up on the screen, I'd like to introduce to you Jeff Adcock, who is our Executive Director of Institutional Research and Assessment. And Jeff, the, the room is yours for your core measures report.
Thank you. Can you, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. Good afternoon, trustees, Chair Oxiger, Dr. B. On page 58 of your packets is a top-level core measures report. We also internally refer to it as the operational dashboard. And it's, it's aimed at trying to understand and to show performance of the institution over the year. For the 2122 academic year, the school ended with 9,379 students. This includes both high school concurrent and college-age students. We chose the benchmark of the previous three-year average to show you that the previous three years was 8,761 students. The bottom, the number at the bottom represents more or less the actuals to goal. And that, you know, we clearly were at 107%, so we're clearly above the three-year performance benchmark, at least. For the one-year retention, or the retention section, it's, it's measured at, you know, looking at the 2020 to 2021 academic cohort. And it's only college level or college age and degree-seeking students that either returned or graduated within one year. That number comes out to be 47.53% of all of our low students. As well as, again, looking at the three-year, the previous three-year average is 50.54, culminating with a 94% performance percentage. As far as the learning section, as noted in last month's curricular assessment report, there was a gap that in the measurement. So these figures are So these figures are actually from last year's dataset and not new. As noted last month, we're currently in progress of, you know, making sure or ensuring that those numbers we have available for this year. The completion section is the hundred-and-fifty percent completion measures. That means, you know, did they graduate, did any particular cohort graduate within three years? For the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen academic year cohort, the result is a thirty-two point four percent graduation rate with a three-year average benchmark of thirty-two point six. Again, calculating to be a ninety-nine point five percent performance to benchmark. And should also note that all these numbers, except for access, are in part, they cover the COVID year. So we had a lot of challenges there, for sure. The very last one is probably the most interesting one, at least for most, is the impact. Every two to three years, the institution engages with a third-party MC, now known as Lightcast, to derive the economic impact the school has to its service area, both Weld and Laramie County. This was one of those years that we went through this process. And I wanted to note that the third-party or MC changed their methodology. They incorporated data that is more current using IRS data as opposed to census data. The result for the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty academic year equated to two-hundred-and-forty-four point one million in overall economic impact to the community. And since the previous results, which were a much higher value, have a different methodology, they could, they just can't be compared. However, we were able to reassess the previous results with the new modeling. And the data from the twenty-seventeen to twenty-eighteen Economic Impact Study was reassessed at three-hundred-and-seventy-one point five million. This results in a minus one-hundred-and-twenty-seven million in valuation since the previous year. Some may be asking why. The not-so-simple answer is that alumni spending makes up a significant portion of the Economic Impact Study. And the data is suggesting that our alumni are leaving our service area. And so that's the large part of the reason for the reduction, the large reduction. The next few slides in the report are looking at disaggregate information and access, retention and completion. For brevity, here are a few significant takeaways comparing this year's disaggregated information to last year. High school student headcount increase was significant. First-generation headcount increase was significant. Non-traditional student, those aged twenty-five or older, one-year retention decrease is significant. As is non-students of color, three-year completion rate decrease. I stand for any questions?
And when you assemble this data, I noticed different year cohorts. And then do you bring it all together or is there, do we have a, you know, year, school year eighteen to nineteen? And that's the, you draw all those numbers across and then we have nineteen to twenty and we draw all those numbers across? It seems some of that information is from, and then you're combining it, especially on the first slide.
So it's, you know, it's combined over a period of time. So we're looking at, the data that you're actually looking at is basically the past four years, including the current year. So it's.
Our completion rates are about thirty-three to thirty-five percent, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The ninety-nine percent, what does that mean?
So when you're taking a look at the actual performance, and the actual performance, let me get back to it. The actual performance was thirty-two point four percent as opposed to the three-year average. The previous three-year average was thirty-two point six percent. So you're taking thirty-two point four, dividing it by thirty-two point six, essentially.
I see. Thank you. No, that explains it fully. These numbers really haven't changed for about eight, nine years, have they, much?
The, the retention rates.
Retention and completion.
They don't change all that often. However, we like to take a look at more disaggregated information to find out where they are changing. But overall, they don't change all that frequently. Obviously, headcount or the access one does change or has been changing. I hope that answers your question.
Headcount can change, but the average doesn't really change, does it?
Not much, no.
The numbers here, annual graduation, graduation rate within three years. Does that include those that just came for a certificate? They weren't intending to graduate? Or does this mean graduated with their associate's degree and/or graduated with their certificate? Is this including both?
This would be including both. It is college-age students that are already degree-seeking. And it would include both certificates and/or degrees within three years.
Okay, a follow-on question. If you took that out within four years, would it change dramatically or is that pretty consistent?
It would go up about four or five percentage points. Not much. Okay, thank you.
I have an interesting question. You're looking at everything within a three-year period. And we always say it's a two-year degree. And I've had some parents complain or say it's a two-year degree, but it's taking three years. So I don't know, this is probably not your question for you. It's a marketing thing or communication or?
So what, so the question basically is, my student isn't completing in a two-year time. It's a hundred-and-fifty percent completion rate, which is actually very common for community colleges. So I'm not sure, the answer is it's pretty common. Every student takes, has their own pace. And when you look at nationwide data, and maybe Jeff, this is where you can chime in. When we look at nationwide community college data, a hundred-and-fifty percent completion is pretty common in what we kind of use as the thumbnail these days.
Yeah, it's, it's the benchmark standard for the most part. Everybody measures against NCCBP or National Community College Benchmark Project, as well as IPeds. They use a hundred-and-fifty percent grad rate for community college two-year degrees.
I would like to say your dashboards are amazing. I love how they're laid out, the information's great. And I think Ames is doing a really good job. And it shows where we can improve a little bit. And, but it's well-laid out, I appreciate that.
All the credit goes out to Heroko, she, one of my staff members, she created it and developed it.
So just for clarification in my mind, when the marketing brochure says a two-year degree, that means if a student came in, they took a full-ode for two years, they could complete the associate's degree?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
But most of our students are working, am I correct? Or at least fifty percent of them, there's not that many going full-time and maybe half. You know, I think we're, we're, we're looking for those three or four points above average as a win. You know, when we're at average, we're doing good. When we're, when we can strive ahead, that's what I've always noticed as the wins, you know, to grow like twenty-five percent would be, there'd have to be an act of God somewhere, I don't know. But it would be neat, but getting those ten and fifteen percent extra percentage points, I think is great. And the information is what I've seen in my tenure, there's not to say.
And we're absolutely getting there. And as Dr. DeCosmo said, you know, this is, we're really looking at this being a holistic process. So the work that the faculty and chairs and deans do and looking at this information, and Jeff alluded to it in terms of brevity, we really get into the disaggregated data to really look at where we can move that needle for those special populations and everyone. And hopefully by doing that and having a systemic institutionalized process, we'll see those larger gains over time now that we have, fingers crossed, COVID out of the way and all of those issues. Because it really is about that continuous improvement. And we have the tools and data now to be able to make those data-informed decisions and tactics, be able to move forward to best support our students. So you don't get those questions of why it's taken longer than two years.
Any other questions for Dr. Rothmer and team?
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just before the president's report is over, I will ask, are there any supervisors in the audience that would like to introduce new employees to the board? Okay, I don't see any. So that concludes the president's report, Chair Oxger.
Thank you very much, Dr. Warrenstein. Thank you, Russ. Next on the agenda, reflections and comments from board members about Ames. This isn't about our meeting, this is about Ames. So just to differentiate.
Sorry, sorry, anything you didn't say, Jean?
Yes, and to begin with, just what we saw today and how it relates to being innovative and meeting the demands of the community for workforce development, but also meeting the expectations of students that come in here and that they're interested in, well, I shouldn't jump to that conclusion, but most of them are looking for something beyond accounting and things like that. Ames is more innovative than most, any other schools I hear about, which isn't that many. But I'm so impressed with how Ames is, I was looking out at the horizon to see what, what new demands from students and the community might be out there. Great job.
Very good. Thank you, Jean. Anyone else?
Heidi.
I second everything that Jean said. It's, Ames is just amazing. And I want to say hats off to Ames as far as capturing some high-level, not some, a lot of high-level teachers. I mean, you're acquiring these amazing professional people that are bringing their, their knowledge and their love for teaching, and it's just increasing what Ames can do and a reputation. And I am so appreciative of you finding the very best.
Thank you, Heidi. Anyone else?
Yeah, you know, when you look at the last six years, we've been, last seven years going on now, pretty soon, wow. You know, we've been on the board here. We've seen so many dynamic programs evolve and become supported by the community and by staff and everybody having a pride ownership that's just overwhelming. You know, what, you know, I used to bang my head on the table with Dr. B on what can we do to help the high school students? And we've grown that concurrent enrollment exponentially over the last four years. And how we envelop programs that, that students in high school can say, yeah, I can be there, I can do that. You know, and how, how much further can we go down that, that lane? It's, it's, that's where all our students come from. So if we can continue to support those programs that I'm very fond of, as you know, skilled trades programs. We used to build houses, this college used to build houses, used to build houses. They bought lots and built houses. But, you know, we were very fortunate because we have a fantastic group. We have how many employees, D? Seven hundred?
We have over thirteen hundred for one part-time.
Thirteen hundred, you know, that's a huge effect on this community and how we, we support this community. We've got a lot to be proud of, very much so, across the board. And so just want to thank you for what you're doing and how you keep this ball moving forward, always.
Thank you, Mark. I would certainly echo those comments. And it's, it's so exciting to come to these meetings and hear our reports and hear our excellence at Ames and everything. And see the innovative programs like the ones we've seen today, like the ones we've heard about. We read our packet, we read about the, the awards in our automotive program and our aviation program. And we hear about applying for scholarships and representing Ames at, at these conferences. And it's just amazing, it's amazing what we're doing and what our people are doing. And the, how far-reaching Ames is becoming and the people that are aware of us. I think one of the most, the things I like most though is when I'm out in the community and I talk to people and listen to them talk about their, their sons and daughters, students at Ames, and what they're learning and how impressive they are and how happy they are that, that their children can come to Ames and get a quality education is anywhere, if not more so. And that, that truly excites me when I hear those kinds of things. And it's, it's within the full spectrum of everything that Ames has to offer. And hear about how adaptive we are. My gosh, when we developed the program for Banner Health practically overnight, that's what we do. So I'm, I'm very, very proud to be associated with Ames, very proud to call myself for a moment. And I'm proud of everybody. Thank you. Next on the agenda, I'm sorry, anybody else? Can anybody else? Okay, next on the agenda, the assessment of the board meeting. Any comments on the board meeting? Got all of our assessment criteria there. Anybody feel they didn't have time to speak today? I think we all had quite a bit to talk about today. We did a good job communicating how we feel and how proud we are. I think we focused on our vision and purpose. I'm sorry? Oh, I'm talking to you and not to, sorry. So I think our focus was, was very good today. So, and of course, we learned a lot. I think it was a great meeting. Anybody disagree? Okay. Comments from trustees? Anybody have any comments to make other than the ones we've already made? Yes?
I just want to say thank you to Mike Millsap for the construction preview of what's to come or what's coming or what's happening out there. It's just amazing and very exciting. And hats off to everyone being patient for it and working really hard. And I'm excited to see what the future is at Windsor Campus, at the Gateway Building.
Okay, thank you. Mark, did you have something?
The only other thing, I just got a Phantom Four, Pro Phantom Four, and I got a long ways to go. I don't think you can do a loop with that, can you? Thank you. That was a great, great entertaining thing and good meeting. Thanks, Lyle and Dr. B.
Okay. Well, with that said, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Seconded?
I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor signify by saying. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.